Welcome everyone to the August 10th Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you could please join me for saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
And I'd ask the board, sorry if you could all just remain standing for one second. Many may have seen or heard some news on Facebook over the past week or so, inclusive of yesterday. Two longtime volunteers in town served on boards, really gave a tremendous amount to the town. Recently passed away. So if you could join me for a moment of silence for Richard Dick Vaughn, who passed away yesterday. Dick was a member of the Board of Assessors since 2013 and also the KBO General Manager since 2014. Also Robert Bob Howard Senior, who passed away on August 1st. Bob was a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals since 2015 and the Town Representative on the WRTA since 2018. They'll, the world is a little less with their passing, so again, just join us for a moment. Our condolences to their families. Thank you very much. All right, folks, awful lot to do tonight. First up, we're talking about approval of minutes, first from July 13th, 2021, from the regular meeting.
I would make a motion we approve the minutes of July 13th, 2021 meeting.
We have a second?
I second it.
I got Patsy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next up, minutes of the special meeting from July 29th.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes of the meeting for July 29th, 2021.
Motion. Have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Patsy. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 401. Thank you. Next up, relations announcements in open form. Select person, Patscha.
What do we have for tonight? Old Home Day celebrations, September 4th to the 6th. We are looking for volunteers and you can contact us at any town hall website or Kathleen Walker is always there to serve. All Boards, Departments, Commissions, Committee meeting is Tuesday, September 21st, 6:00 PM. Looking forward to that one. This is going to be at a senior center and the idea of this meeting will be to bring all the boards together to share what we're working on and how we see the Charlton town coming years.
Thank you, Patscha. Any other announcements from the board? Any other announcements from the public? Ms. Walker, always nice to see you.
So we had some bad news, but now we have some good news. And we're here, Jerry and I, Terry, and I don't know if the rest of the committee is here, but we're from the Old Home Day Committee. And we're here to announce tonight the award winners for this year's Old Home Day Award. So.
Go for it.
Thank you. Each year, the Charlton Old Home Day Committee seeks nominations for community service awards for Charlton businesses or residents. The awards are intended to recognize volunteer work in the community schools and service to fellow citizens. The awards are not intended for those who, during their traditional occupation, complete their tasks, but for those who perform the good deeds purely out of volunteerism and civic duty. Whatever the endeavor, these people deserve to be recognized and applauded for their efforts. So our first award is, we'll start with the youngest. It's a community, youth community service award. And this was established in 2011 and it's intended to recognize the positive contributions of a young member of the community who has altruistically pursued human efforts in improving the world in which we live. Such an award is to establish an example for others of a young age to follow. And this year, we are honored and pleased to announce that Kelly Devlin, I think her mother's behind me, is getting this award.
Certainly a chip off the old blocks. Notice I didn't, I was kidding about the old part, Mary.
Kelly served the town as a dedicated volunteer for Chippin for the past nine years, where she's helped with stacking shelves and organized the food for distribution. She also volunteered for a short time at Blessings Farm here in Charlton, helping with the horses and goats. She is a 2021 graduate of Bay Path Vocational and will be attending Curry College in the fall to study forensic science. She has been an honest student throughout. And that award will be given by this board and the reps and Senator on Old Home Day at 2:00. And we hope you all will be there. The, we're giving out three individual community service awards and this award's given to those who have made contributions which may have brightened up our little corner of the world. And the first award goes to Avia Singer. She has collected new toys throughout her high school years and two to three years in college. She donated them to Child Life Services, the only Level One Pediatric Trauma Unit. She did an incredible job with these toys to make the children have some normalcy during the holidays. The second one is going to Frank Morel. Frank has lived in Charlton for 45 years. He's a retired history teacher and served for seven years on the planning board, 24 years on the finance committee, seven years on the historic district committee, 45 years as a member and president of the Charlton Historical Society. Frank has co-authored three books on Charlton history, several on Worcester and other communities. He has presented numerous historical programs to the community. This is a high bar for all of us.
As an aside, a lot of these pictures you see here are from Frank.
Yeah, Frank put them up, took them and framed them.
As you were reading that, I thought it was time for us to just leave.
The next community service award goes to Darlene Amco Rollins. Darlene is best known as Executive Director of Chippin Food Pantries since 1993 and continues in that role. She has served the town of Charlton as a member of the Charlton Firefighters Ladies Auxiliary and raised enough money to obtain their first set of airbags to lift weight off victims in MBAs. She serves as a member of the Rees Committee, Tri-Epic, SAV Committee, Old Home Day Committee. She is a CERT member and recently initiated the first summer feeding program for the Dudley Charlton School District. Darlene is an RN and graduated from Worcester City School of Nursing at Worcester State University. She is also a traditional Reiki practitioner and gives Reiki treatments to clients of hospice and seniors at Overlook. And, you know, you could go on and on for Darlene. Had to really cut it down, actually with it, Frank, with all of them, because they've all done so much for the town. The next is the business award, and this award traditionally goes to a local business who on a regular basis supports community events, groups or activities. Normally, it's just one award, but this year, because of everything that's happened with the pandemic, we felt we had to give it to two different businesses, and the first one is Chippin. Chippin was established in 93 for the Charlton community. It's run by an all-volunteer board of directors and volunteers. They collaborated with the USDA in distributing 61,740 pounds of food during the farmers-to-families at four distribution sites this past year and did not shut down during the pandemic, as other pantries did. In addition to their monthly outreach, they took on the town of Dudley as a client base. They are the only food pantry that gives out new toys to children for Christmas and birthdays and even distributes cat and dog food to those that need it. They also opened their pantry to striking nurses. Chippin is open and ready to give food to whoever comes to their door in need of it. The second award goes to the Charlton Sewing Center. Jim Philbrook, Director of the Charlton Board of Health, reached out to the Charlton Sewing Center at the start of the pandemic. And their response to his ask for help was, whatever you need. They supplied masks throughout the entire first year of the pandemic to schools, hospitals, prisons, Board of Health, and never asked for any money. Those financial donations that did come in, we donated them to the Charlton Senior Center to assist any seniors that had some food insecurity. They enlisted hundreds of people who could sew and they made thousands and thousands of masks, including special masks for all the veterans to be handed out on Veterans Day. Their efforts continue to this day. And the next award is the Honorary Parade Marshal. This award goes to a longtime resident who during their lifetime have consistently improved our quality of life. And I think he might be watching on TV tonight. I hope so. Reverend Jim Chase and his wife Diane came to Charlton in the Federated Church in 1987. In the 33 years he held that position, he became deeply involved in the Charlton community. Jim visited Charlton manor faithfully each month, offering communion to the residents. He was a chaplain of the Charlton Fire Department and in that role, visited and lent comfort to the 9/11 responders. He was a loyal supporter of Charlton Helping Hand and with Charlton residents led many mission trips to areas that needed help. After health issues hastened his retirement, he and Diane continued to make their home here in Charlton. And the Citizen of the Year. This award would be the highest honor with consistent presence and repeated acts of major impact. And this award goes to Clarence Bashan, who at the age of 98, is finally retiring, just recently, from the Bay Path School Committee, Memorial Day Committee and Veterans Grave Marker. Mr. Bashan has served the town of Charlton as Constable, Council on Aging, Gas Inspector, Industrial Development Commission, Monument Committee, Municipal Building Committee, Recreation Commission, Sewer Commission, Wiring Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. He also served in the US Army and is World War II veteran. He's been married for 72 years and is the father of five children, eight grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. In 2013, here in the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Lifetime Membership Award for Outstanding Service. In 2018, he was the first person to be inducted into the Bay Path Hall of Fame. He served in the Charlton American Legion Post from 1946 to the present and he was in the Boy Scouts for 78 years. You talk about high bars. And our last award is the Posthumous Award. And this is given to a departed citizen who has given much to the community. And there's, I have to tell you that every one of these awards was voted on by our committee, which we've got about 10 people, and they were all completely unanimous. And there was no controversy about any one of them. And this one especially, going to Dennis Patrick Tully. Dennis is survived by his wife of 34 years, Darlene Tully, his son Eric and two daughters, Megan and Emily. He is a Shepherd Hill Regional High School graduate and earned his bachelor's degree at UMass Lowell in 1982. Dennis was a brilliant engineer and for decades, he helped lead miniature tool and die the businesses. Father Richard began in 72 in his Charlton basement. In 2008, Dennis purchased the business from his father, rebranded it MTD Micro Molding and repositioned it for the medical device market, steering it to enormous success. MTD became known around the world for its mastery of highly precise specialized miniature parts that no other company could produce. Under Dennis, MTD became one of the nation's fastest-growing companies and won numerous awards, including being named one of the plastic industry's best places to work. Despite the company's accolades, Dennis was always the most proud of his staff, who we cared deeply for. Dennis was an incredibly selfless and generous man, always insists investing time and effort and money into causes he and his loved ones cared about, from cystic fibrosis to the RFK Children's Action Corps to break the silence, the organization that helped lead an end to the stigma of mental illness and prevent suicides. Dennis served 12 years in the town of Charlton on the Charlton Finance Committee. So that's it. Thank you so much for this time. And we're not, we're trying to catch up to these people.
No, Kathleen, thank you and the committee for that. I mean, just when you hear those names, they're all equitable with Charlton. And they're the perfect definition of community service, so it's, again, to your point, I don't know how we could ever live up to that. So excellent choices this year.
Do you want to do a quick pitch for volunteers for the Old Home Day Committee? Because we, we, the committee needs people and it's the most fun committee to be on in the town of Charlton.
Because of Jerry, right?
That's a lot of pressure, Jerry.
Well, Kathleen's not so bad either.
Well, we could use some volunteers, people to learn for the future, you know.
Oh, I think what they're saying is that they, I'm sorry. I think what they're saying is that there's a lot of old people on that.
That's not what we are saying. That's not what we are saying. We just think that there's a lot of things to learn.
I'm looking back from where I'm sitting, I'm looking back at a lot of young people that seem like they're pretty capable and physically fit to help on almost anything. I think what the speech you just did was beautiful for all those, for all those awards. It should inspire people to say, hey, it's a morning, it's a day, it's an afternoon, right?
One of the things we'd like to do is just.
There'll be a sign-out list on the way out, by the way.
Yeah.
And I'm going to write it up right now. And if you don't volunteer, I might just write your name in anyway.
Definitely reach, if anybody does, is interested, it's really, it's a fun committee because you're, what you're, you spend the year and the meetings get more frequent now because it's coming up, but it's, it's, you, you spend the year planning for a super fun day. It's not like you're, you're, you're voting on dog bites, I mean, huh, boy. You know, that you go home and contemplate. It's, it's truly a fun committee and your whole goal is to make the event as, as fun as possible for everybody who lives in Charlton. And it, it, it's a great group of people and definitely could use some people to step up. And again, it's not that much of a time commitment besides the weekend itself and attending the meetings and they're truly fun meetings.
One of the things we, one of the things.
125 years, I just wanted.
Yeah, I think what they're really implying.
One of the things we'd like to be able to do, with new people coming in, is we can teach them as they come along and it makes it much more continuous and makes it flow better. And, well, you get old, you get old, there's no way to get around that. And we'd like to teach young people how we do these things and they can be continuous that way, so.
Jerry's actually putting together a little book that, that tells all the jobs and what it's.
We're trying to make a manual.
Oh, that's great.
We're working on it. It's not an easy thing. If anybody's worked on it, you know, and they're not easy to do.
Yeah, procedure manuals are what keep things ticking and that's what.
I think what they're really implying is that, given the list Ms. Walker just read, don't even think about trying to catch up, but here's an opportunity to start.
Yeah, you're right.
It's just a lot of things that goes into planning this event. I did not realize actually how much. And, and that's a lot of details and it's just the more we know. And this is a wonderful event and it would be just a shame, you know, not to have somebody to take over when the time comes.
And we're meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 at the Senior Center if anybody wants to come.
5:00 at the Senior Center tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry.
And Jerry, well, for a second, for, for you, for the, for the Soapbox Derby, you, you've got enough people or you're?
Well, sadly, take a little time. Sadly, we do the yearly weigh-in.
Yeah.
And that way, everybody can weigh their car and their kid, and then they can see how much extra weight they can put in or take out. We have a limit of 250 pounds. Sadly, I could use somebody, and this is up at the middle school driveway, you know, the big hill. And that way, they can test their car while they're there.
Yeah.
So if someone wants to show up sadly around, that's 10:00.
I think on the website, I think it said they were going to do the weigh-in at 6:00 AM. You're going to do.
Oh, no, that's the, the race itself. That's on Labor Day.
But there still is a weigh-in on Saturday.
There's a pre-way-in?
Yeah, that's the preliminary, so everybody can adjust their car or test it out.
I've been through it. Yeah, no, I, yeah.
So if anybody wants to come at 10:00 at the middle school driveway, we'll be there and they can test their cars. And I have a couple of cars if somebody needs one, but that's it.
You do have a couple of cars that are available though. Do you have five? Do you really?
Sorry, Steve, you gotta be under 250.
No, no, no. My son, my son, my son aged out three, four years ago, but, but he's willing to help with the hay bales and all that. I think he's worked.
Yeah, that, the hay bales will do, that'll be the Sunday before Labor Day.
Okay.
And that's when we put them out and they could meet us down there around 3:00 at the bottom of Mugget Hill. And we put the hay bales out. The hay bales are there, so if anybody gets offline, they don't hit anything solid. They hit the bales and the bales will move out of the way so they're okay. So I don't want to take anybody's time up.
No, no, I love the event and it's a, and my son did bounce off a hay bale at one point. Cause dad maybe didn't quite tighten that tire down or something before, but it's a great thing, really.
We do have a new master or mistress of ceremony turned off this year.
Thank you, Terry.
Who stepped up, people keep sticking up to the plate when we need them to start, and Terry just walked right into that place and said, I'll do it.
If you could post those times, some, if you, if, maybe if you could post those times, 10:00 AM on Saturday and 3:00 on. I'll write it down, but, but.
Yeah, I'll post, I, I'll, I'll make sure one of us does it.
Okay, sounds good. And we'll see you tomorrow night anyways.
We'll be there.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you very much.
Jerry, thanks, thanks, thanks for, thanks for.
Perfect. Next up, ours, actually our 6:45, we're a couple minutes behind, but that's okay. So we all know COVID has taken a lot out of families, out of the town. It's just been a horrible few years. However, there are certain selectmen that never got a, let's just say, a proper goodbye. And I want to invite them in tonight, along obviously with the rest of the board. And I know we have all three of them here, so there's actually wonderful news. So what I would like to do is invite up, in no particular order, all at once, select person John McGrath, select person Karen Spewack, and person Deb Noble out back, making a nice town hall appearance once again. Come on up, guys. Really, the biggest issue is that we brought you cake. So that is really, that is really the key that we'll be cutting momentarily, but I'm sure that the rest of the board has their thoughts as well. But from the bottom of my heart, I can't thank enough of, like, thank all of you enough. When I first came on, all three of you, like, took me under your wing to teach me more about how, what, what the most important things were for the town. And I know we didn't always get along and because I'm sure, you guys may have seen that in the past.
Nobody gets along with Bill.
But, but the reality is that you were all great mentors, you all dedicated tremendous amount of hours to the town, and we are in a better place because of you three. So please don't ever forget that. The town owes you a thank you for all your years of service. And really, I just wanted to say thank you from, from the bottom of my heart, once again, that you guys have all been great friends. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Concur. David?
And just quickly, we heard the Old Home Day Committee talk about the people that make this town great. You three are in that category. I don't think the public really know what you did behind the scenes, the selfless acts. And frankly, in some cases, the abuse, when all you ever did was fight for what you believe in your heart is right for this town. And I don't think that we can thank you enough for putting yourselves out there and doing what you did as long as you did.
It was fun.
As we print out some of the hate email. No, I'm kidding. So anyway, like I said, we have cake that everyone is welcome to have. You know what, let's take a five-minute, do, have some cake, and then we'll go back to our favorite thing, poll hearings next. So we'll see how that works out. So anyway, Drew, give us five minutes. We're cutting cake. Make sure that you get yourself some cake. Please. Thanks, folks. I appreciate the patience. We are now moving down to our 6:55 poll hearing on Griffin Road.
Attached, let's see, poll hearing for Griffin Road. Attached, you will find a request from National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated seeking to relocate two joint-owned poles on Griffin Road. Also attached is a notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the police chief and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to abutters.
Here we go. So the official public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 6:55 PM in the Selectmen's Room, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507, and via Zoom to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., seeking permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Griffin Road, National Grid to relocate two JO poles on Griffin Road, beginning at a point approximately 955 feet northwest of the center line to the intersection of Sturbridge Road, Route 20, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a north direction. Relocate Pole 6, 10 feet east. Relocate Pole 5, 25 feet east. They're also seeking permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and building as each of said petitions may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard in this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Our public hearing is officially open. Let me ask if there's anyone from the public here who has any questions, concerns about it at all. Hearing none. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. I would now entertain a motion on action by the board.
I make a motion that we would accept the, the request about the poll.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Another poll hearing without any issues. Thanks. Yeah, two for two, right? You like that? Now, thanks for coming again. We appreciate it. All right, next up, because I just lost my agenda again, we are at the 7:00 PM Treasure Collector for our bonds.
Virginia Porter, Treasure Collect, Town's Treasure Collector, has asked for time on the agenda regarding bonds for South Charlton Dam improvements and the public safety building. The bond company has provided the attached vote that needs to be made by the Board of Selectmen, should you approve. I recommend the board vote to dispense of the reading of such a vote and make a motion to approve as submitted. The full vote will be attached to the approved minutes. Also by Zoom is the town's financial advisor, David Eisenfeld from Unibank. So I will just bring him in real quick.
As we're doing that, Virginia, is this your first official in-person meeting, being the boss?
Thanks.
Nice. Welcome to the show officially.
Thanks. Glad to be here.
That wasn't sincere.
All right, I'll say.
Bye, Deb.
All right, David, can you hear us?
Hey, David.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening. Would you like me to say a few words about the bond issue? I'll ask through the chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, David, please, if you can give us the 30-second elevated speech, that'd be helpful.
I will try to make it a 25-second speech, Mr. Chairman.
Even better.
There is a vote before the board to award and execute $1,945,000 of general obligation bonds. This bond issue will retire $2,400,000 of bond anticipation notes that were issued to finance costs of the public safety project and the South Charlton Dam repair. The bonds will be repaired, will be repaid on a level debt service basis over 20 years. The town took bids last Wednesday, August 4th. Town received four bids. The winning bid came from Fidelity Capital Markets at a true interest cost of 1.3, 1.738. Other bidders were Bernardi Securities, RW Barrington Company, and Roosevelt and Cross. The effective capital cost of this issue, including issuance costs, was a little bit less than 2%, which is remarkable for a 20-year level debt service issue. Part of the process of doing the bond issue was seeking a rating from S&amp;P Global Ratings. The town has had a AA+ rating, stable outlook. Last time that S&amp;P looked at the rating was in 2015. A number of town officials participated in a call with S&amp;P analysts and as a result of that call, S&amp;P affirmed the AA+ with stable outlook. Are you, Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Any questions from the board? Just a quick comment for those who are watching at home, and David, please feel free to chime in. Reality is that our financial condition is actually very positive and that is due to, quite honestly, the town hall staff is obviously, as well as the residents, are trying to support us as best we can with our overall decision-making. By having a strong bond rating, that's one of the reasons why we can borrow so cheaply. So when you think about other towns and their, and their financial issues they may be having. we don't have those issues because of really good planning from the staff for, for like multiple years now. So again, very well done to all of you and to everyone who came before us, because it certainly makes our lives like a lot easier. David, anything that I misspoke that, that I'm gonna get in trouble for?
Not at all, not at all. I think Charlton is a strong credit. I think that, you know, if the town continues to have strong finances and continues to, I mean, I think that the, the demographics, if the demographics, socioeconomics, wealth and income became stronger, that we could be perhaps, at some point in the future, looking at AAA, but that's probably not going to happen in the near term.
Mr. Chair, I just think we would be remiss if we didn't include the finance committee. And specifically, you know, when we mentioned staff, they, they're also crucial.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, well said. Thanks, David. Virginian team, anything that you want to add?
You're gonna have writers scram by the time this is.
If by you, you mean these four? Yes, I would absolutely agree with you. All right, any questions for our team? All right, I would entertain a motion, but I would say it might, I would also recommend taking Andrew's approach and just say as written, because we'll be here for four, for like four days, reading this motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve as submitted.
We have, we have a motion?
I second that.
Thank you, Patsy. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. David, thank you once again for, for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Good evening.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Thanks, David.
Virginia, do you need us to sign that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can you leave it?
You don't have to do it right now, but before you leave.
Gotcha. If, yeah, if you want to leave it, oh, Pierre, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, okay.
We should probably tell Mary that she should stand at that door and not let anybody leave without signing it. She's really the pit bull on that.
No, I'm still terrified. Thanks, everybody. Really, honestly, great job on this. All right, we are officially back. I had a schedule. Let's, if, with the board's pleasure, if we could move to, back to the appointment and resignation, let's do the appointment of the HR Generalist.
So 22 applications were received for the HR Generalist position, which is a 40-hour exempt position at 2420 per hour. Five interviews were held with three candidates from Charlton. The recommendation is to appoint Lisa, I'm gonna butcher the last name, I know.
Lisa C. We all know Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa C. To this position. Her start date would be September 13th, 2021, which would allow us time to fill her current position as Administrative Assistant for Building Inspection Services. I recommend the board make this appointment.
And what are the board's wishes?
Second.
A motion, we have a second. Any discussion around Lisa?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Lisa, thank you. We're gonna miss you in the, in the building office, on building inspections, but we welcome for the new one. Let me see, what time we got? Yeah, we got still a couple minutes. Let's do the Animal Control Officer, Animal Inspector, please.
So 14 applications were received for Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector position, which is a 40-hour position with a weekly salary of $858.40. Six candidates were chosen for interview, one declined, and two were from Charlton. The recommendation is to appoint Emily Sears to this position, and her start date would be August 16th, 2021. I'd recommend the board make this appointment.
Feelings of the board?
So moved.
Motion, a second, thank you, Patsy. Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Welcome. All right, let's do the Custodian of Tax Possession Property. That's always a fun one.
So we'll be holding a, a, we'll be holding the Charlton Sale Auction of Town Property on September 14th, 2021. We have asked David J. Coppola Esquire of Coppola and Coppola PC to assist with the sale. In order for Mr. Coppola to be named Custodian of Tax Possession Property, the Board of Selectmen will need to officially vote to appoint him as such. Below is a recommended motion for his appointment, and I'd recommend the board make said appointment.
And for those folks watching at home in the audience, basically, this is around town-owned property. And the question is, what do we do with it? Do we sit on it, or do we try to auction it off and put the revenue where it's, where it can be most useful? So in order to do that, we, we need to appoint someone officially to take care of it for us. So that's what we're trying to do here. So I would recommend with Andrew that we, unfortunately, someone actually read this verbatim if possible, because it is MGL.
Do you want me to read it?
If you don't mind.
Um, do you want me to do the whole, we will?
Oh, no, just.
As provided under MGL, Chapter 60, Section 77B, we, the Charlton Board of Selectmen, hereby move to appoint Attorney David J. Coppola of Coppola and Coppola PC, Tax Title, Tax Title Attorney for the Town of Charlton, as Tax Possession Custodian, who shall have the care, custody, management, and control of all property acquired by foreclosure, deed in lieu of foreclosure or by torturous deed for unpaid taxes, and who shall facilitate the sale of tax possession property under MGL, Chapter 60, Section 77B.
Thanks, Patsy. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from David. Discussion.
How does, um, how does he get paid for that? Is it commission based, or is it, that's a curious question.
The, I just wanted to speak to that.
Thanks, Donna.
Is there an option, or is it added to the cost of the person, the option price? Like it at that point?
Oh, okay, okay. That's a curious question.
No, it's a good question.
Good, thank you, thank you, bud.
Any other questions? All right, I think we had a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Keith, I'm gonna get to you in one second, if that's all right, and just want to do with regret, Andrew, next up.
Attached is a letter from Nicole Neal resigning her position as Assistant Treasurer, effective August 12th, 2021. The board should accept her resignation. It's been a pleasure working with Ms. Neal, and I wish her best in her future endeavors. Letter thanking her for her service is in your sign folder.
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second, and discussion? Just want to echo the TA statement. Nicole's been a great addition to town hall over the years, and she's gonna be missed, and I, I think she's gonna be fantastic at where she's going, so. So all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That is unanimous. Thank you. We are back on target. All right, Keith, you're up. Thanks, guys. Welcome, Keith. Always nice to see you out of.
Out of uniform.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Keith Plutia, 39, Buffen Road, Charlton. I have here with me Michelle from Massachusetts Citizens Against Crumbling Concrete. I know about a year ago, Ann Goby was out to speak to the board. Since then, we've had some changes on the board and even the town administrator. When she was out here, that's when I had just started learning about my own problem at my house with the crumbling concrete. Michelle has a great PowerPoint and very informative, kind of bringing the board up to speed on kind of where we're at and where we're going. I think one of the things, though, is I, I need to touch upon is, there seems to be this misnomer that this is a Connecticut issue. So to give an example, when I started my, with my problem, the radius that they were looking out from Connecticut was about 20 miles. We, Charlton was on the fringes of that 20 miles, including my own house. Since that time, we found houses, not only in Charlton, more houses in Charlton, Holden, Rutland, Berry. So right now, the area that we're looking at has been as far west as like Southwick, Mass., as far east as Grafton, Mass., as far north as Holden. I've spoken to some of the experts in the field, Craig Doff, and he's being one of them, whose family was part of the concrete business. He basically said that chances are, it, it made no sense for the, this aggregate, that that's the problem, that came out of Connecticut, to have gone that far north. In all likelihood, which means that there's a source right here in Massachusetts or in central Massachusetts. Now, the timeframe for the one out of Connecticut started in 1985, and it went to at least 2015. That's the known source. We don't know about another source in central Mass., so that could be even different than that. The other issue is, is that, so that means a house that was built only five, six years ago may not show signs for another 10, 15, 20 years from now. So anyone in this town, if you were to look at your concrete or your, your foundation, it may look perfectly fine today, but 10, 15 years from now, you'll see the signs of it, but it's too late at that point in time. But I'll, I'll let Michelle go further with her. You said you have the PowerPoint, right? That way it's very informative.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please, David.
So Keith, even if there is a source in Mass., and correct me if I'm wrong, but for anyone watching, even though the source was Connecticut, it could have easily been distributed here to homes in Massachusetts, and that's how it could have gotten here. But if your home was built 20 years ago, would you see it yet?
So here's the thing, the, the mineral, it's a purite, okay? It's an iron mineral. And it, it basically, it rusts. And what caused it to activate and rust is water and air. So from what we're seeing is, is that there's several factors. There's the percentage that is in the material, the amount of moisture that is hitting the concrete, and then obviously air, and then time. So all them things can dictate. So if you were to look, and you're gonna see a picture of my house, but if you were to have gone and looked at my garage last year, and you would have looked at my concrete, and you would have gone, wow, what's wrong with that? Then if you went to where I pulled my wall down from my finished basement, you'd want to throw up. And, and it's literally night and day from the front of my house to the back of my house, and that's because the front of my house is dry, back of the house is wet, where, where the hill was. So I went out to a house in Holland, it was built in 1985. It was showing signs. It was nowhere near as degraded as mine. But the house in Holden, which was in 2001, was in, in really, really bad condition. So there's so many factors in there. They have determined that there is no, that they know of, any suitable amount of that material that could be in there that would be acceptable. So any amount that's in there potentially could activate and pose a problem.
We expect that the higher the percentage of purite, provided the conditions are right, with the moisture and the airflow, will accelerate faster than one with a lower rate. Like, my house in particular has a lower rate of purite, and we're looking at being able to stay there for a while. It, it is getting worse, but slowly. And, and, and that, and even that is after hitting a spring when we dug the cellar hole. But we backfilled with sand, and we put an extensive footing drain in because we hit that spring. And we run a dehumidifier all the time, so those engineers said, all of those things we have done have slowed the process down, and our lower percentage of purite may be also contributing to that. But the, the variables, like Keith has explained, are just so extensive that it's hard to pinpoint when any given house is going to show signs. But we'll get started here if you want to. We, you know, this sign was made by one of our residents in Holden who had to replace their foundation. They could not wait for any, any aid. And there's a picture of, of the walls. They were in bad shape. Okay, so what's purite, and, and what does it do? Well, you can see on the left side there, it rusts really bad. And when it rusts, it expands, and that's what causes the cracking in the foundation. The more of it you have, the worse it's going to be. That foundation on the right-hand side, that is from a home in Wales that was built just probably two years before mine, and mine doesn't look anything like that. Mine's got fine cracking, lots of it, but it's not like that. But you can see, that's, that's the result of the degrading purite in the walls. This map is, is the telltale of what Keith explained to you. You can see Massachusetts, if anything, has more of these iron-sulfide minerals than Connecticut does even. So though this has come to light because of the company in Stafford Springs and Connecticut's issue expanding into the border towns in Massachusetts, you, you can see that those, that material expands right into Massachusetts, and you know, we, we, there's no possible way that we avoided having a quarry in that whole area. So we expect that Massachusetts is going to have a bigger issue than they first thought.
Are they local concrete places? Because, I mean, you can, and the way I look at it, you can only travel so far with a load of concrete, right? So it's.
Well, you would think so. Right, they say about an hour and a half travel time to, before it has to come out of the truck, if it's been mixed. When the Federal Government Accountability Office came out and did a study here in Massachusetts and Connecticut, I was told by one of the members that they felt that MODIS did dry deliveries as well into Rhode Island, where they would put the material in the truck and mix it on site with the water. So that is a game changer. It's really difficult for us to know how far they've gone.
Are they, are they testing local places now for this?
They are not, but that is one of the things that are, are included in the, the bill that we are asking for your support with tonight. It, it provides quarry standards, testing, and, and the industry is in favor of it. I mean, there are some, obviously, who don't want to because they, they're afraid of what could happen to them. But it is standard in the industry to test for a number of materials, and you would think that anyone who has a quarry would want to be able to say, my material is clean. You can use my material for concrete. I've had it tested. So their executive director is in favor of it and has, has voiced that publicly. So if you move on. Right, this is just a map that I made on my computer with towns that we know are, have been affected. I, there, I've been contacted by the homeowner, or they have appeared on the list from the State Department of Professional Licensor, because they have had it, put in for reimbursement on their core testing and engineer inspections. And we expect that's going to expand. I mean, if you look at those towns between Berry, Rutland, and Holden, and the, the towns more on the border, you, you gotta know that's, the ones in between are kind of most likely to be affected as well. It's just a matter of time. We find that a lot of homeowners are not wanting to come forward because, let's face it, who wants to say, my house value just tanked? I just lost everything I've invested in. It's not a comfortable feeling. Denial's a great place to go. My husband and I did it for quite a while before we decided, like, we had no choice. We paid off our mortgage. We had no bank to, like, just hand the keys back to and say, see ya. We'll take the seven-year credit hit. We couldn't go to the insurance company. There's no coverage. You know, you'll see on the, the next line that this is, this is where people go. They go into denial for a while because it's safer there, but. Oh, how are homes made whole again? Well, this is, this is what you'll see. This is the home in Holden, all of these pictures. This is the one in the lower right is how beautiful this home looked before. But that was hiding what was beneath the walls, the, the sheet rock. And then that picture up in the corner is mid-process where the, where the home is lifted. And you can see on the right, that's called cribbing. That's how the house is held up in, in the air to begin with. They, they support the house with the cribbing, and then they cut pockets into the foundation and put the metal beams in, and they lift the house hydraulically. Then the foundation's removed and replaced, and the floors are poured, and the utilities replaced. And then this particular home was $280,000 to be, to be done. They just moved back in a couple of weeks ago. So that's, it's a really tough thing to face. I, my husband and I are, I just retired. My husband's looking at retirement another year and a half. How could we possibly, our quote was $263,000. How could we possibly afford to do that at our age? Go ahead. This is how a core test is done. And if you, this is how you find out for sure. Do you have purite in your concrete? You do a core test. And there are various companies that do this, at various prices. But the state is reimbursing for this process at this point, 75% up to $5,000 for the core test, and 100% up to $400 for the engineer inspection.
But, but nothing, there's no federal money, state for the repair, nothing, nothing.
Not, that's like, that's why we're here.
Yet they do.
Yeah, no, I figured.
Yeah, that's why we're here. I have a question. So once that engineer inspection is done, is this noted anywhere? For the public to, to see? In other words, would that be disclosed for the sale? Well, that's something else that's in this, this law. There, there is so much in the proposed law that Ann Goby, Senator Goby, has put forward, and that is one of the things, seller disclosures, to protect people who are buying.
If you want to do it, you have to disclose it. So the paperwork is gonna be noted, yeah.
Yeah, so if we could move on to the next one. And why are we advocating? Well, there's no recourse. It's been proven in Connecticut that insurance companies aren't going to cover it, and they can't be sued to do so. So, a, a, and personally, my policy was changed six months before we found out we had this problem. I have them, the changes in front of, you know, in a buying. I have them, the changes in front of, you know, in a binder. They changed it to only cover an abrupt collapse. And that if you knew of the reason that the abrupt collapse happened and you didn't mitigate it, then that's not covered still. So they made sure they weren't going to be held responsible for this. So we had no insurance coverage, we couldn't give our house back to the bank. We had nowhere to turn, so we turned to our legislators and said, look. Somehow insurance companies were given a walk on this. We have nowhere to go. What do we do?
One of the things that people have said to me is say like, well, why don't you just walk away and give the, the house to the bank? But here's the problem, your house has no value. It's devalued 70%. So the bank is going to go, I'm not going to foreclose on that house. What am I going to do with it? I'm not going to, we're not going to fix it. You own it.
It's your problem.
It's your problem. You just destroyed your credit, you've lost your house, you, you have nowhere to go. You can't go to the insurance company. So now you, you have a house that has no value that you just stopped paying on. You know, where do you go? Go live in an apartment somewhere? I just, there's no answer. So, you know, it's not that easy.
How about also the fact that that's your home?
Right, it's your home. It's where, for my husband, it's where we raised our children. We wanted to sell our home to our son. Engineer says, bad news is, your son's not going to be able to get a mortgage as he looked at our foundation.
And also, when I bought my house, I had two home inspections. I had two home inspections, the, the seller had home inspection, I had a home inspection. As we moved along, I saw cracks there. I had experts come out and look at it and say, nope, them are normal cracks, normal cracks, normal cracks. And the only, they started getting worse and worse. And the only reason why I figured this out was my brother just happened to be staying out in Weston, Mass. And says, hey, I'm hearing this rumor about this bad concrete coming out of Connecticut. And I looked it up and I looked, looked it up online and as soon as I saw it, I was like, oh no. And I just, and that's when I went into the denial for about a good eight, nine months. I did, I literally just went like this, oh no, that's, I know that's what it is. And, but then it became like, okay, I can't ignore this because how do I put another dime into this house? You know what I mean? So, and that's, and that's how I ended up finding out is I had it tested. And I didn't know what was behind the walls because my whole, my whole basement was finished. And I didn't want to take down the walls. And it wasn't until I took down the walls, and you'll see a picture in there, what it looked like behind my walls, I didn't know what it looked like.
It, it, we are finding that finished basements seem to be accelerating the issue because the moisture's held in.
The moisture gets trapped in.
Yeah. We can go ahead. The special commission was formed by the state and we held all of the meetings, all but one in Munson. The report came out. The current bill, S548 puts into place some of these recommendations. There's a copy of, you know, the front page of the report. If we can move to the next slide. Oh, we had, we had visitors come out to Wales. There's two different homes in Wales that are affected. We have been really pushing to try to get legislators to pay attention to this and do something. I mean, if you look around, Canada has replaced foundations for this issue. There were 3,000 homes in one town that, that had to be done in Canada. And they came up with a remediation plan. Ireland has done it. Those poor people, it's their whole house because their whole house is built out of concrete block. And then Connecticut's done it. So here we are in Massachusetts. And we just don't feel it's right that we're left out. So we've been really pushing for legislative attention on this. And that on the left is the recommendations from the special commission report. And in my slide, there's something on the right, I don't know where it is. But of those there, S548 includes the quarry standards. Oh, here we go. And it, it prioritizes and standardizes tax abatement so that, because it's all over the map what towns are doing. And assessors don't know what to do sometimes because they've never dealt with it before. It's all brand new. It eliminates permit fees and the seller disclosure pieces in there. And, but there, at the top of the list is the ability to have a captive insurance company in Massachusetts. We don't have the mechanism right now, even if we had the funds, to manage it. So this bill needs to get a hearing and it needs to be passed so that we can take advantage of all the money that the state has right now. Because Massachusetts, according to Senator Goby's viewpoint that she put out a week, a month ago, it, we have, she called it, we are awash in money. Between the financial condition of the state being in a good place and then the $5 billion we are about to receive in American Rescue Plan funds, she feels that there's no excuse why this can't be handled, but we need to get this done. So, next slide. So we are asking everyone how they can help. And you, as a board, we're asking if you could write a letter to these two legislators here that are members, they are actually the chairs of this committee, and ask them to support the bill, hold a hearing promptly and vote it out favorably. If you are willing. We have a sample here, and when I can send it to electronically, from the town of Wales. Wales has done this, Munson has done it, East Long Meadow voted tonight to do this. I expect Burnfield will on Monday night when I go there. We're just trying to show that the towns want their homeowners supported by this. We think that that might go a long way to urge a hearing.
To quote Jerry McFarren, you had me add hello.
No, no, I agree.
Selectmen, sing it first, please.
So, I mean, first, obviously, I'm in favor of supporting that letter. But I think, you know, anyone else we can send it to, state reps Frost, Duran, every elected official we know of. I'd like to see it go to all of them, to even pull in their support. They certainly are friends in, in Boston as well.
There is a whole list of members of this committee. And quite honestly, we've got good support on the Senate side. But on the House side, we're, we're really trying to drum up some support. So if you want to get them all, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd like us to include Representative Frost and Durant as well. I can only, I can't, actually, I'm not even going to say it, I can't even imagine. This, this could be devastating and destroy families. This is ridiculous.
So is that a motion, Selectmen?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second on that?
Second, huh?
Do we have any discussion at all? I don't think so. Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous? We're going to do everything we can to help.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I think the next two slides.
Yeah, Keith, you're so.
Quick, yeah, absolutely. So that was my house last year.
Wow.
That was my corner of my house when we dug down. So that was underneath the soil, so you couldn't even.
That wasn't visible for me, oh, you had a finished basement.
Yeah, but that wasn't visible because that was, you can see where the soil line was. The cracks that were starting up top, and up top there was what all you could see.
It's kind of like an iceberg, you don't know what's underneath it.
Exactly, yeah.
Keith, you're going to have us all going home studying our basement?
Or not.
No, I think there's also.
So that was what was, when I pulled down the sheet rock, that was what was behind the sheet rock right there. And that was actually pushing into the, into the wall right there. And my lolly column on that corner of the house was the only thing that was really holding that up. It was bowing so much. That was my other, that was the corner. So I had no choice but to do my house. I, I couldn't wait, unfortunately.
And this is just a bad roll of dice. This could happen to anybody, so that's why I think we, we as a community have to come together.
This is a political thing.
Yeah, this is such a wide range of time.
So we don't even, you can't even say where your, depending on where your kind of cement came from, right? You don't even know because nobody knows.
We personally knew because we were the general contractor on our house. So we know we had J.J. Modas concrete.
But it's actually in the aggregate. So it comes from the quarry. So it all depends on where that concrete company got the aggregate from. You know what I mean? And that's, it's not just the. We had the porcelain, so one in Holland and it came from Ameral Corp out of Sutton. So we know it didn't come out of Connecticut. But did they send the aggregate to Sutton to send back to Holland? We don't know. And then there's another house, that's the other house in Charlton. So that's the second house to be done in Charlton and.
Do we know how many houses in Charlton? Are there people coming up?
I know there's more because I've seen more. The problem is, is we just don't know how many. And the other thing is, is that because it's such a wide span in time, there's maybe going to be some that we may not know for five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. And there's, and you, nobody can tell you just by looking at the concrete. An engineer cannot tell you just by looking at the concrete. By the time you figure out that there's a problem, it, it's already too late, that, that you've already seen the signs of it. The only true way to know, know is to core test your.
Maybe there's a way we can put something on a town hall website to delegate people to the right people.
We do have, we do have a little something up there. I think Kurt Meskis did put up something up there. I mean, it could probably be updated. And there's also a forum that's going to be held in Munson. I had asked to be put up on the town board, which we did.
Yeah, I saw the signs around too.
It's going to be a lot more informative. It's going to be basically what this is, but two hours' worth of information.
Besides the, the website, is this something that a town could also be a bit more proactive? Whether it's the sign board downtown promoting the crumbling foundations group? Perhaps the text messaging that goes to all residents? We do for other things to notify residents about the issue and who to contact, crumbling foundation. These are other things I think we can utilize to get the word spread even more widely, at least in Charleston.
Yeah, also Drew, for you, that could be a good topic for your TV station, you know, to bring it out there.
If you have the public access TV here, if you contact Impact TV Palmer, they have a number of videos and things that we have, sure they would share with you as well.
Okay.
If you could come over and interview them about it and show the, you know, the slideshow.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, anything that we can do to raise awareness.
Part of this bill is, is to try to secure some of the infrastructure federal funding to be able to help owners, homeowners out during this or?
What Senator Goby had mentioned in the viewpoint she published in masslive.com is, she said that what she wants to see is the American Rescue Plan funding, which is tied to COVID funding that was passed even before the infrastructure bill. It is $5 billion coming into Massachusetts. They, you know, at this point, and, and we may be premature in putting a number to it, to be honest with you, but they expected maybe 2,000 homes in Massachusetts. That was before we really understood that we had a bigger issue in Worcester County. But for those 2,000 homes, at an average price of $175,000 reimbursement, which is what Connecticut is doing, which doesn't cover it by any means, but it, it helps. That's like $350 million. That's a 7% of that, $5 billion. Somehow I think they can encourage it. But they need encouragement. And, and this needs to be shared, like you said, in a wider audience legislatively because you, we're going to need support of people who've never heard of it and whose constituents aren't affected. They have to understand that this doesn't just affect the homeowner. It affects your town when your homeowners abate their taxes. It affects the other taxpayers in town because now where is that tax money going to come from? So, you know, it's, it's a more of a global issue, so to speak. Pardon that, that phrase, it's thrown around so much, but it really is. It affects people more than just that homeowner.
Yeah, I think, well, as you see, we're already going to send the letter to everybody. But I think you'll find this board has no problem calling out our, our elected officials at the state level publicly.
I, I have to say, I am very impressed with what Charlton has done so far. I mean, putting it out on your website, putting it out on the board, really just being right there to support your, your residents. I think that's a wonderful thing.
All right, I know it's a lot, but I would be open to it if you guys would be willing to, as this progresses, as there are developments, to kind of come back and keep us in the town informed.
Absolutely.
If you guys have packets or fly, information packet or something?
We do, and I can email those.
Old Home Day brings out a big, huge amount of our residents. We can throw one on.
Hey, what about a, what about a booth?
Yeah, we do.
We have a town booth.
No, I mean a booth of our crumbling foundations. Manning it could be an issue, but.
We have a town booth, so we can use those materials, put it on our table.
Absolutely.
So just for information.
I'd just put some flyers out there about the forum that's coming up, there's some out on the table out there about the forum.
I can send it to whoever you would like electronically.
Yeah, send everything.
Your own.
Yeah, I was going to say, if, if you could send the information to Andrew and include that letter that I'd, sounds like, was it, was it Palmer?
Yeah, Wales, Wales actually sent this out. And it's a, it's a good example.
If you could send us that, that we can use as, as a template, that makes our lives a lot easier. But yeah, we'll get that out within a week of, of receiving it, the latest.
I will send it when I get home.
And then hopefully for Keith, after we, after we secure some of that funding, we, we make it retroactive as well, right?
Well, that, that would be. Absolutely. And to be honest with you, it's something we probably should have mentioned is that a residence who decides to go, that, you know, I have this problem and I better do something about it, get the core testing, save every document you have, get a structural engineer opinion because the state may require those things to, if you have to do your project like Keith did now, you may have to show, I would expect you would have to show all of that to prove it before you could get reimbursed. They did do reimbursements in Connecticut.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, thank you. All right, next up, Henry, sorry to keep you waiting, our 7:30 with Henry Willen. Welcome back.
Thank you.
When Henry finally drives his truck, he's pretty convinced he's going to be really careful where he bonds out.
That's like one of the only few times, like, the only time, one of the few times Henry's actually been able to be here live in person and not on Zoom.
Yeah.
Now, now a second time since the town meeting.
Exactly. Yeah, Henry, if you could give us the formal introduction of who you are, address, et cetera, just to be, just to be officious.
Yeah, my name is Henry Willand, I live at 47 Bond Road and I'm here to talk about the internship I had with the town of Charlton this summer. I'm going to share my screen. Awesome. And I'm muted, so there's no feedback?
Yeah, you're awesome.
Awesome. All right, so this summer I was working on increasing voter participation in the town of Charlton and I coined it the Charlton Civic Engagement Initiative. So just a little background, it is an internship through Harvard College and the Center for Public Service and Engage Scholarship and through the town of Charlton as well. It's designed for incoming freshmen at the college to help ameliorate their own communities using Harvard resources. So I devoted 80, 80 hours to the project and 20 hours to leadership training. So obviously, the past year I had a first-person view of the town of Charlton and the local government. This is my first ever participation in the government and it really spurred a lot of curiosity and interest and a love for Charlton and what we do every day. And it really made me realize that Charlton is a pure democracy. You know, everyone has to participate and vote to make the town their own. And so really what started my interest in the voting rates in Charlton is comparing the election turnout of the presidential election of 2020, which drew 78% of voters and the town election of 2021, which drew 7%. I mean, obviously, we're not going to get 80% of the town. Bill Barowski is not as polarizing as some of the candidates nationally.
It really depends. We don't know that yet. You wait till May, you don't.
Yes, but, but still, having 7% of the town vote for the elected officials who make the decisions because local government is really the most important part of government that impacts citizens the most. I mean, we just saw a presentation on crumbling foundations that affects everyone's personal budget. And just to compare it to town meeting as well as, the town meeting in May was my first town meeting and only 1.44% of the town showed up and that's 143 voters. So, I mean, obviously, 716 people making decisions, 143 deciding how our budget's spent and deciding on issues like the fire station, the public safety facility and Amazon coming into the town. And it drew some criticism on social media, so I really wanted to look at the issue in its entirety. So my goal's heading into the internship was to determine if this was a one-time kind of thing or occurrence of a larger trend. I wanted to garner some, garner some citizen voice, hear what they had to say about how we do what we do and investigate modes to increase the overall voter participation in our local elections based on communication, incentivization and accessibility. So my first goal was to determine if it was systemic or not. So using the town election historical data, I kind of mapped it out. So I used the total number of registered voters for historical years and compared it to the turnout in each town election. And here is the data and the next slide kind of shows it better. So looking at the beginning of the graph is year 2000, the turn of the century. As Charlton historically had a turnout, turnout above 50%, it was 68% in 2001. And if you look at the graph, it slowly decreased with an exponential decrease. And since 2014, it's been the lowest in the past seven years. So you see the downward trend. And actually, town election year 2021 was the lowest percent ever recorded. And just to compare the town election of 2001 compared to the town election of 2021, 68%. 68% compared to seven. Of course Charlton is very different as it was in 2001, but still 20 years later drew about 60% less people. So then I took a look at the annual town meeting in May. It was a little, so Charlton used to have like three town meetings, so they had like something in March, May, November, October. So I just took the annual, which was in May, and it's a little less visible. And there is a steady decrease, but it really wasn't too surprising to me because town meetings usually deter, like determined by the issues there. So obviously in 2018, you had 8%, which was way higher than other years. And you could have a fluke year, like in 2011, 2.1% of the town showed up. And again, both 2020 and 2021, 2020 was obviously a little different because of COVID, but they were the lowest ever percentages recorded for town meeting. And just to compare again, 20 years difference, town meeting 2001, 8.36% and town meeting 2021 was 1.44%. So that led me to determine that it's systemic, it's a systemic issue, it's going to, it's a yearly occurrence and that we have to look at what we do and how we do it and change that to get more voters drawn out. So, I mean, you know, a lot has changed in the past 20 years. We didn't have cell phones. It was a completely different society. And, you know, sometimes local government is a little bit slower than the changes in society. So it's a little bit of a call for us to do better and that their progress exists. So then the second pillar of my project was gathering some citizen voice on our election. And so I sent out a public poll conducted through Google, Google forum. And I sent it to Charlton Happenings and Mr. Bill Barowski. And so to get a survey of Charlton voters, I didn't want to get any names, so it was all anonymous. And it was just for the purpose of kind of getting a sense on how we do our elections. So I'll share the results. So have you ever participated in town election and or town meeting? 80% was yes, which is pretty good. So do you feel informed of when the town election and town meeting are? Only 61% responded yes to that. Do you feel informed of where the town election and town meeting are? That drew 68%. And then I was kind of testing ways to see if people would respond to, well, what we could do different. So would increasing signage, you know, draw you more effectively to vote? 70% yes. And a push notification system, more effective way, that'd be 86%, 15% higher than signage. And so then I asked about the voting days themselves. So the Maytown election, it's usually held on the first Saturday. Do you feel that this is a convenient time to vote? 71% said yes. And then I asked about the town meeting day, usually on a weekday. Is this a convenient time to vote? Only 64% responded with yes. So that led me to conclude that there is a large percentage of the town who does not know where and when we vote and that should lead us to improve our communication between the town and our citizens and that the town election and meeting days can be moved around a bit to increase accessibility for the town. So using the data and the historical voting trends at Charlton, I worked on the pillars of communication, accessibility and incentivization to increase voter participation rates in our town. So into communication, so kind of current modes right now. You got signage around the town, advertising in our papers, social media and Code Red. And really I thought the way to expand communication is to expand reach and the effectiveness of how we communicate. So I would propose to increase the signage budget, make the election visible in town and especially around the busiest parts of towns, Route 20 and popular intersections and really reach out to local businesses to advertise as well. Because for our elections, our community effort, we're going to need a community approach to increase turnout in those elections. And so then I explored the platform right now that we use, Code Red. I tried downloading it on my phone. The, I thought it was a little outmoded. You know, what I wanted to do is make it easier because, you know, downloading an app, you know, some citizens in our town, you know, don't, can't juggle those kind of obstacles. So I just wanted to find something that was more easy and convenient to use, not necessarily an app for, to remind people of when and how to vote. So I explored this popular platform called TurboVote and it not only helps register voters before an election. I'll show you the prompts it asks you, but it sends you a reminder 30 days before an election and one day reminder. And what's unique about TurboVote, it's not an app, so you don't have to go to the App Store, download it from your phone. You use a link to access it and then you can sign up with your phone or email and that'll send you your reminder. And information is not collected or sold by third parties. And really what's special about it is compatible with municipal elections. So even though, you know, we have like 1,000 voters in a Maytown election, it'll still pick up on it and alert voters that it's happening. So the signup process is really easy. I did it myself. It takes three minutes. So you access a link, you enter your legal name, your address, ask if you're registered to vote. If you're not, it helps you register to vote, your address. If you want to change voter information, party address, so it'll guide you to the right resources to do that. Your affiliation and it asks for your preferences on mail-in and in-person voting, so to help you for the federal elections. So it's quick and easy and there's really no nuance about it. I mean, you're not really gonna think about it until it sends you those reminders. And what's special about it is that we could demo a partnership with the town of Charlton. So we're still working to figure out if we can attach warrants and the candidate information, like a link to the candidate's night, which would be very convenient. And also Andrew wouldn't be able to customize his messages himself, so there's no like corruption there, like go vote for this person. It's all done by third party. Yes. So also to improve communication, you want to educate people on why their vote's important. Long Meadow has demoed a, a project like this as well. So we worked on town administrator reports and I would propose a greater focus on civics in the local schools. So Andrew started doing his town administrator reports this year. So kind of just a summary on the local meetings and occurrences that are posted to Facebook. So obviously not everyone can attend every meeting for a lot of hours. So kind of just a quick point lets you know what's going on and what's going on in the election cycle.
Big fan of those, by the way.
I can.
So then I would propose an emphasis on civics. So as I went through Shepherd Hill, there was only one world history class and two American sections. You really don't get that sense of what happens in Charlton or really the history of Massachusetts itself. And there's a lot of potential there because if you want voters to return to Charlton and really engage in Charlton, I think it was like me and one other kid under 40 at the town meeting. You want to let the youth know why their vote matters. So, I mean, even the school can demo a mock town meeting. Introduce a Charlton and state history course. And if one of you wants to be a guest speaker sometime to the course, it could do a lot to show kids that their, what the town that they live in matters and that their participation matters. So moving on to accessibility, I, so I looked at enabling more people to attend the elections themselves, kind of the dates and conveniency that surrounds that. So I would just change the formatting, a quick one. So town election to a weekday and town meeting to a Saturday night. Because a lot of people talked about how town meeting being on a weekday. You know, you got a work week, it's usually on a weekday, it usually takes a lot longer. So an election, having that on a weekday would be quick. And then you could do a longer event on a weekend. It'd be easier for people to attend. So, and then I looked at incentivization. And I actually, my first thought was maybe somehow we could establish like a lottery. So you could go vote and then, you know, you could pick like a voter and you'd get some money, but that is not legal, unfortunately. So the stay can, we can.
You could have food trucks though.
So, you know, just looking at making town meeting a little bit more exciting. I know Mr. Ridlack, you mentioned this.
No, Bill, yeah, Bill on a dunking.
What, putting me in a dunking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so food trucks, live music and it adds more of a community spirit. And I think if you have voters going into town meeting on a full stomach, you'd be surprised at how much more you can get done. And I just wanted to, worth noting that the town meeting has been historically low, absent of any trends. And the special town meeting, looking at the data in October, it was even lower. So there might come a time when even with incentivization, participation's still decreasing. But it's always worth a shot to improve our institutions, as is now. So, yeah, I'm all set.
Oh, Henry, this is great. I mean, yeah, you've done a fantastic job here. An excellent PowerPoint skills, by the way, that, those are gonna serve you well. So here's the obligatory question and it's, it's just the reality. How do you deal with voter apathy? So not even people don't, aren't necessarily aware or whatever, they don't want to be aware.
They don't care.
Like, they basically go out of their way to say, I don't want to be involved. I don't like the politicians in town. I don't like anything. I just want to be left alone.
Too busy.
Yeah, exactly, I'm too busy. This is literally the last thing that I, that I want to think about. What's your opinion? And honestly, thinking about the youth vote too, you're right. When you go to town meeting, there's not a bunch of 20-year-olds hanging out in the audience. So how do we, how do we combat that part? Because we can throw all the signs, we can throw everything out there. And, because I think we did more for this past town meeting than ever. And to your point, and again, excellent, excellent analysis, the attendance was anemic. And we, we did more than we could ever have done. So I don't expect you to have an answer, but I, but I am generally curious like what your just thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, obviously you can't get everyone. You're not gonna be able to force everyone to vote. Not everyone's gonna be interested. And it's unrealistic if we are, but the fact that 80% of people participated before in a town meeting and a town election and only seven and one participated this year, shows that there is improvement. And, you know, we're never gonna hit 100, you know, I don't expect us to go back to 68 as in 2001. But I mean, even 15, 20. It's not really about fixing the issue entirely, but improving what we have.
Do you, how much do you know about that history of Charlton? So if you look at the general population of, even going back 20 years, the type of people that lived in Charlton. A lot of them are big landowners, a lot of, a lot of the population was much older. Go back 40 years, I'm like, you know, so it, the, the population of town was much smaller and everybody had a, again, and the age was, was higher.
Yeah, of course.
So if you, that kind of is, you, you could, it could never go back because Charlton is now, a lot of people moved from Boston, a lot of younger families. If you looked at the school committee, the big school committee meeting, so many parents are worried about the way the school committee, there, it was packed. I've never seen, I mean, there were so many young people that went up. So it seems like when there's a, a reason to come, like get involved, right? But it's, it's hard. I, I begged friends, I begged people that were my age to come and they're like, eh. I mean, unless they owe me a favor, and I'm like, just show up, just sit there. We want our numbers higher. It's, it's, it's hard.
Yeah, it's not easy, you know? There's a lot of times you're going to do things to fix turnout and it's not gonna work. But my thing is, you know, you might not be able to fix the problem entirely, but we can at least try as a town to fix it.
One more question, I'm sorry, that, what, did you compare us to other towns?
Uh, yes, I did a little bit of data. I reached out to some TAs. I only got one response from Long Meadow. But I looked at kind of the towns with the highest participation rate. It, of course, it stagnates with us. Some towns are exceptionally well, especially the smaller towns like Harvard, Mass. But a lot of the towns that did really well, you know, hovered around 20, I found. That was kind of the Goldilocks number. So, you know, no one's getting like 68% for continuously for a town election, but the best ones got around, you know, high 15s, low 20s.
Let's go, David next, Roger, I'm gonna get you in a second.
Yeah, just, so a quick point, numbers game. You know, 150 voters in a town of, say, 12,000 versus 150 voters of a town of 6,000 is gonna have a much higher percentage turnout, even though it's only the same number of voters. So a question I have and a comment to throw him under the bus. The.
Is it about the dunking?
The question is, so the, that voter, not an app, but that solution. The cost to the community to implement, I'd like to know what that is. And then the first, one of the, I think the first time I was chair, I actually went to the middle school. And I sat on the stage, they brought in, it might have been all the eighth graders. And I was there with the TA and there was a whole dialogue about local government involvement, why it's important for these kids to participate, we took questions from the students. I don't know if it's ever happened since. I think it's a good idea to do it at the middle school, even the high school. I would welcome the opportunity, I'll go, you go, but all of us, but to go back and to talk to the students and explain why it's important, you know? And to Henry's point, you know, getting them involved young and getting them to understand the importance of participation, not only just to vote, but perhaps get involved and run for an office.
Yeah.
Andrew makes some phone calls.
Not just our kids that we forced to show up and watch?
Correct.
We're in.
I can tell you that many of my kids have slept on the benches in the back of the public light office many, many times.
I made my kids go on the signs for people.
Steve, did you have something?
Let Roger, let Roger come.
Roger?
I'm sorry, Roger, who is 17, Colvin wrote, I just got a couple of comments because like Patsy, I went out and particularly the town meetings where we vote on the money, I mean, that's so important. And I've asked all my relatives, all my friends in town, everybody, why don't you go? I mean, especially when somebody whines that they didn't get the public, the fire station. I said, well, it lost by two votes. If you believe that, you should have been there. And what I'm getting for feedback is, and, and trust me, I go back to when the town hall meetings were held in the library. I mean, I go back with the old farmers, the Maniards and, you know, the farmers ran this town for a number of years. You'd go there and there would almost be fist, fistfight to it. So, I mean, this school went to double sessions before we built Shepherd Hill because they were so crockery. I mean, it was just, they were very tight with the money, let's put it that way. And, and, but what I'm getting from people is the meetings run so long and, and, and they just drag on and on. And I tried to tell them that electronic devices that we now have has expedited the meetings tremendously. I'm of the opinion, people have to understand that it's not the old above-the-town-hall meeting anymore. You know, it, it does run out because people line up and I've been one of them up there talking. So people line up, so it drags on a little bit. But with that automatic counter, it saves a tremendous amount of time. We're getting out of there much earlier in the evening than we used to.
Yeah.
So I mean, it, it is, it is two issues. One, I, I keep telling people, it's not the old town meeting. It's gotten a lot faster, a lot better because electronics has helped a lot. That's one thing. And, and the other thing is like you all say, if there's something that fires people up and, you know, dare I say VGG, when VGG was going, I can remember there were meetings that held at the elementary school that was packed with people because people were concerned. All right, if it's something to do with the school or something that people are very, you know, your, your participation goes up. But I really think if we can get people to understand, because they sure don't listen to me. But if we get them to understand that those meetings are not the old turnout.
It's true.
Count by hand and then have to count again and then the voice count and then you have to voice count again because you're really not too sure on some of these. It really, and then when you went to the paper ballots and you had to set up a whole, you know. So the meetings dragged on for hours. I'm trying to tell people, a well-run town meeting gets out at nine, 10 o'clock now. It doesn't go to 11. You know, it used to max out. Sometimes they have to go to two nights. Those days are gone and I'm not sure if the technology is there, but people haven't caught up with it.
No, thank you for that, Roger. I appreciate that. David, back to you for a sec?
Just to respond to both of them, I think they both hit the nail on the head. So yes, the electronic voting is much more expedient. But in the end, if you take the amount of time it takes to actually vote, right? Even when we had to hold up our cards and we would get hand counted, it took a little while, but it wasn't exceptionally long. What I've always found was when there's a contentious issue, you have bigger crowds, more people want to speak. Therein lies the main reason I think we have much longer meetings is that it may not necessarily be voting and it is faster to your point with the electronic. But if you have a contentious issue and 50 people want to speak as opposed to one, because it wasn't really contentious, the opportunity for residents to speak, which to me is critical, is in of itself. I think why some of the meetings go so long, people want to, they want to have their chance to say what they feel. And then it boils down, again to your point, to the moderator to make sure those meetings are being run efficiently, to try and move it along and get them out in a reasonable time while at the same time, making sure that anyone who wants to speak gets to speak.
We have a long history of strong moderators though, like we really.
That's the other key, well, Roger, Roger pretty much.
If you, if you went into the early 70s and you had it over there, it would get loud. I mean, people would be screaming at you. There wasn't as civil as there is today, let's put that way.
Rogers happened, I was a recent member, people screaming in the audience.
I do have a question, I wonder.
No, I was just a kid, so I was.
When you, when, Henry, when you were looking back at those 60% numbers back in 2000, the population of the town was far less.
Yes.
When I, every town meeting I. When I, every town meeting I go to, and I've been to very many, it's the same people. So, we're not capturing the new people moving into town, it's just the same people.
Those are the young families.
It's the guys, it's the guy, it's the awesome guys that are Rogers' age.
But, but I can't get my wife to come.
Yeah. So, so how do you reach out to that, to the new people coming in? You know, there was, and we were talking about this, and I was thinking about it. When I, Jesus, thirty years ago, I moved to Oxford, and, and they had a policy that you gotta, um... I bought my first house, and the realtor, either, they, the town of Oxford, either followed the deed or whatever they did, but I got a welcome kit.
I was just gonna say that, do we get a welcome kit, like, these are the boards?
Hey, this is what Charlton does, this is our schools, please get involved in this, please. I don't think that's, it's a mailing, it's a...
I, I don't think that's a bad idea, but what I was going to say to, to your comments, I think overall, when you look through the data and through the history last, past few years, I think the overall atmosphere, the political arena is kind of sad, and people are taking this, people lost, you know, faith in government in general. Uh, it's not only here, it's just, there was a lot of commotion about elections and about everything that had happened, and I think people, we actually had that meeting when people were actually tired of everything that was happening, and that could be a, a part of it. But I agree with David, I think that, and I take it even a step down, I think it all starts in your household, you know? And it's not only the kids, it's the parents that should be communicating with children and teaching them, bringing them, do, teaching them about civics, uh, going to middle school, even elementary school, like, I think what Andrew did was, was excellent, this is on my points for you for next year, to go out there, you know, to be on the TV, to go to the schools, educate, but also get to the parents somehow. Maybe we will put something hard on the agenda. Like, why do the parents have to go to the school committee meetings to talk about issues at school? Maybe we can open it up here and say, "Hey, we wanna hear your voice," no matter the committee, you know, no matter the board you are at. Maybe the more you speak, maybe the more people will hear it. Also, between the boards, you know, maybe we are roundtable, maybe we can communicate it, work together, how to get those people in. Even if we take all the boards in, all the members from the boards and all the members from the committees, that should be a higher percentage.
We can't even get, we can't even find volunteer, I mean, we have, we have boards that are just empty. That don't have, that, that, I mean, I, I begged my husband to just get on, you know, me, us, because they didn't have, they wouldn't have had enough people to vote, um, and he loves that.
Just talk, talk about it, talk about it, talk about it.
One of the things I probably recommend, just for the sake of time, I know Henry, you know, has been, you know, uh, been very kind with this, is that we definitely look into, it's like I was saying, his point, around figuring out, uh, cost and execution around the, around the overall Turbo Vote. And then, but also, one thing, I, I hate to say it, but we may wanna consider forming a subcommittee, uh, with volunteers from the community, uh, to come up with, uh, formal recommendations that could go to the town clerk, board of selectmen, everyone else to say, "Hey, let's start doing this." So, maybe we put that on, eh, eh, for our September agenda, to kind of revisit and have a discussion, unless anyone has any concerns with that yet.
I like that, I like, I think the welcome packet is a great...
I can answer one of those questions right now, so we've already had discussions with Turbo Vote on this, and basically, they kind of offer one of two options, either it's, you know, at, at no cost to be at least a partner, to kind of demo some of this stuff, or, right now, we'd fit into their lowest tier pricing tier, which would be a thousand dollars a year.
Well, that, I think that's something we can, that we can definitely talk around, as part of the operating budget and et cetera, as, as we go through. But Henry, that's a, that's a great suggestion. Like I said, th- this was fantastic, and...
And they have privacy agreements and all the other things.
Yeah, it's more for customization, that we can look to see who's utilizing the tool and what...
I know you're going back to school soon, however, we definitely wanna keep you involved in this, because this is obviously, like, one of your, like, this is really yours, so...
It's an issue, I'm very passionate about it.
So, we're gonna stay in touch with you on this, if that's okay?
I, I would love that.
Cool.
I just wanna reverberate, uh, Mr. Coronas' point and, uh, Basha's point. I think creating a culture that participates in the town and voting is very important. You know, I moved to the town in two thousand and eleven, throughout my schooling career, I didn't, like, we never learned about the town administrator or the board of selectmen, I just thought a board of selectmen existed, I didn't, I never knew Andrew existed. So, the welcome packet, that's an amazing idea, because...
He prefers it that way.
I mean, is it, is it, are it active, um, active in, in town politics at all?
No, no, they're not. I mean, my stepdad knows what's going on, but like, my mom moved here in two thousand and eleven, and it's, it's hard to understand the former government com- coming from a completely different community. So, if you educate, you know, people about, especially the newcomers to Charlton, because a lot of our population is fa- young families moving them, moving in, so if you target those voters, and...
You know, in the welcome kit, uh, will we, will, will...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't wanna cut it down, it just, we, we still have a ton to do, so I would recommend that, that we table it till September, if that's right. Henry, nice job on this, seriously.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Yeah, we're gonna stay in touch, don't worry about it.
All right.
Thanks, Henry.
Have a great night.
Good job. And, and ten years from now, you bring Mrs. Whalen in with you, and you're...
I'll make her participate, don't worry about it.
You're gonna do a civics class right here in front of us.
Okay, thanks, Henry, and thanks, Roger. All right, uh, next up, we're on, uh, item six, we're into new business, free cash prioritization. Andrew, I'm not gonna make you read this, but, long story short, on this one, I asked Andrew to put this on there. So, again, as people may realize, at least I hope at this point, that free cash isn't really free. It's basically excess revenue, um, and, you know, we, it's basically, we have more money than we thought we were going to, either via excess revenue, or we didn't spend as much. It gets certified, and then we ultimately spend it in the October, November, or the, the fall town meeting. Historically, we've had tons of capital asked for, which is, which is what it's supposed to be used for, really one-time expenditures, some could argue police cruisers, other vehicles, you know, operating, but whatever, I'm not gonna get into that. What I, what I think we need to do as a board, is give Andrew direction to work with the finance committee to say, "What are these boards' priorities, uh, what are this board, or these boards' priorities, going into fall town meeting?" I mentioned it a couple of meetings back, a few months back, that personally, I would like to see fire department and police prioritize for capital investment, especially knowing that the public safety building is not being discussed right now. And by public safety, I don't ness, I'm talking fire, police, something. Right now, there is nothing being proposed, I want everyone to realize that at home. We are not having a discussion, as of right now, about building a new one. Will that change if we get new revenue? Possibly, but that's years away. So, in the meantime, we need to make those buildings safer for our employees. So, my personal recommendation, not just a chair, just one-fifth of these, of the board, is that that's one of my priorities, along with OPEB, and as along with putting free cash in. Everything else comes below that, unless it's an absolute emergency, but it better be justified. But I'm gonna stop talking, 'cause I really want to...
Mr. Chair, I would, I would agree, as long as you include highway under public safety.
I'm gonna say yes for discussion, because I think there are certain things on highway that would be debatable. But, yeah, but generally, I one-hundred percent agree with you.
As a department, making sure that the roads are travelable for residents and commerce is critical.
Yeah, agreed.
And that's gonna, that is even gonna get more critical.
Yeah. Rest of the members, like I said, I, 'cause I think at this point, we're just trying to get direction, we, not specific items at this point, but our general, or, members' general philosophy towards An- for Andrew, to, to work with, with Vencom and others. So, I'm just gonna open it, Patsy first?
I think both of those are, you can't debate either one of those. Um, the, the public safety and, and the, the unfunded retirement stuff that needs to be taken care of, that's...
Absolutely.
I agree absolutely, with all those investors coming in, and, you know, um, all different people, you know, entering the town, that's, that should be a priority.
Gotcha. Steve, anything else you want to add?
No, no, I think, no, I like it, I like it. I think, and I know there's some other things moving down later, we're not gonna get into.
Right.
We have all of our favorites, you know?
Yeah, which, which, which we're gonna fight about, which is...
I mean, we all want sidewalks, right? I mean, like that, we, I mean, these things that we all, but those two are, I think, we just, we're, it's a conservative way to...
Absolutely. Basha?
I don't know which, which point out my, my thought will go to, it's two, for Andrew, actually, as for the goals, but they could also be placed somewhere here. I was going to ask about the website improvement, specifically the e permitting for all the, you know, all of that stuff.
Can we hold that just for a few minutes?
I'll hold it.
But, because, yes, you're right, I think it's part of a Venn diagram, that it all fits together. But I'm just thinking, like, free cash for now, it sounds like general philosophy, public safety inclusive of highway takes precedence, anything else, as well as OPEB and stabilization, everything else is gonna have to be prioritized accordingly, and that better be a really good case, at least for me, to be able to, to, to move one of those up. All right, Andrew, you got marching orders?
Sounds good.
Sweet. Thanks, everybody. Uh, next up, the appointment of delegates and alternate to CMRPC. Currently, it is vice-chair Ridlack and myself, uh, we're basically looking to see, uh, who else may want to do it this year, if there are any volunteers. I'm, I will happily be the alternate again, unless someone else wants it.
Yeah, I only attended two meetings, I don't know if you did more, more...
No, definitely, definitely I went to.
Um, so, I'm, I'm bad at it, I don't mind doing it, but I feel bad that I'm not putting, you know, I...
That's pretty standard, that's, I mean, honestly, two is like usually what, what people shoot for, so, that's actually pretty good.
So, I'm, I'm happy to do it again, I just, I have some, some planning background, um, but...
I think it'd be perfect.
If anybody, you know, Gasha, if you want it, or, I don't see...
You don't ask for strongly?
If you're fine with it.
To be either the member or the alternate?
I'm, I'm fine with Patsy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could I get a, no, I'm sorry.
And, or even her is an al-, or even Barbara is an alternate.
Would you like to be alternate, Basha, if you wanted to?
As long as those meetings are not during the day, 'cause I have, that's my issue, with going to those meetings.
No, they, they...
Oh, they're, they're, they're all over the place.
They're all over the place, they invite you to everything, you get invited to, like, um...
So, we go together, sure, why not?
Sounds like I have a motion from David for Vice Chair Ridlack and Basha, uh, as, as alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
No, you just made the motion. Do I have a second?
I tried.
We can't pick it ourselves, it just tack it a second.
All right, I have a second for Steve. Any discussion for select person, Ridlack and select person, Zarowski?
No, unless, unless you're gonna feel...
No, I definitely wanna feel left out. Uh, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you both, we appreciate it, there'll be thank you letters, no kidding. Next up, special, yeah, exactly, I'll get you a paper. Uh, next up, Andrew, talk to us about special town meeting.
All right, so we've scheduled a special town meeting for Monday, November fifteenth. I just asked that the board approve the date and open the warrant. We've confirmed the date with Charlton Middle School, as well as the town clerk and moderator, and, um, the next meeting, I'll have a calendar for the board's approval, um, for steps making our, making our way to that meeting.
And I just verified, once again, November fifteenth, there's no special religious holiday or anything that we should know about, so it looks like it's wide open. So, any concerns around November fifteenth? Again, that's gonna be Monday.
But, I, I just, for discussion...
I'll be flying back from, I'll be flying back from Florida on that date, but I'll be tired.
Steve, got a question?
Um, it, it's, is it, is it a reason that it's, it was always the October town meeting, is it a reason? It's not a, when, it's not, we're in an off-election year, so we're just...
It, it gives us a little bit more flexibility to kind of, especially with some of the balls that we have in the air with negotiations, to give us a few extra weeks before we're really running into kind of like the weather, um, keeping turnout down. So, I think, right, just before Thanksgiving, if we went any further after, you know, and everybody would have an excuse not to be there, but I think it's kind of like the last, the furthest we could push it out while still being in the fall.
And for those folks at home, interestingly enough, our bylaws actually dictate when our annual town meeting is. Any other town meeting is considered special, and it's actually up to the board of selectmen to set it, uh, as often or as few times as we want. So, that being said, looks like November fifteenth, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Um, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, we're gonna publicize that once again with everybody. All right, next up, old business, Employee Appreciation Day, closing of Town Hall, select person Zarowski.
Everything is right, um, ready for that day, so hopefully, everybody, you guys can be there. It's going to be from three o'clock, I believe, until six. We have food, we have misspelled banners, we have, we have, you know, music, uh, Steve will be singing Sinatra. Um, we're gonna have meatballs, we're gonna have pizzas, we will make sure that the pizzas will get delivered to the police station, fire station, the, um, the highway department, and also to the library. Pending, uh, we're not sure yet if they're gonna come, or send some people, or take the pizza go, go on across the street. We have a singer singing, Bonnie, uh, Charlton resident, we have some games, um, Mary's taking care of the games. Uh, and that's about it, and I have, um, outfits for all of us.
I'm excited. So...
So, you'll match, we are matching t-shirts for her, but not for me.
I, it would, t-shirt versus apron, so I can get rid of it quickly.
No, those are, what do you call it, the cooking, what do you call it?
Aprons.
Aprons.
Yeah. So, we're not like Oktoberfest or anything.
Leader hosen, that'd be great. So, I do wanna, uh, thank, uh, select person Zarowski for really kind of spearheading this, I think it's a really nice thing to do with the town. In fairness, we did receive some feedback that, um, maybe next year, we wanna do it on a different day than Tuesday, because there are some conflicts with, with some other hours. It's noted, this is the first time we're doing this again. So, again, we're, we're just trying to do something nice here, and we'll find a way to improve it every single year, but Basha, it's, thank you so much for, for like spearheading it, I really appreciate it.
Least we can do.
So, um, I think we need an official vote on that, Andrew?
Uh, yeah, just to authorize the closure of town meeting.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, town hall.
Yeah, again, so just everyone knows, this is a board of selectmen decision to close, uh, Town Hall for a few hours to give people a break, uh, just to kind of let them enjoy themselves. It's not an employee ask, this is us, we're just trying to be nice for once. So, uh, do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Uh, I got Patsy?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, any discussion?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is unanimous. Select person Zarowski, thank you very much. All right, actually, next one, um, all boards, departments, commissions, committees meeting.
All right, so as directed by the board, the all boards, department, commissions, committees meeting has been set for Tuesday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, six PM, in the Senior Center. Um, it will be taped by our cable coordinator and put on YouTube, which can be found on the town's website. Selectman Zarowski ha- has asked if we should have refreshments. In the past, we have not had refreshments, but, as there aren't any town funds to pay for this, uh, the board would have to make that decision, choose to decide how to pay for it.
Mr. Chair?
David, please.
I, I'm not gonna question you to have refreshments. I, I honestly, I don't see why, but, doesn't the select board have a selectmen's account? So, if we need to get some, uh, refreshments, or it was a couple of boxes of Joe, and donuts from Muffins from Dunkin', don't we have a selectmen's account we could use to pay for the refreshment?
We did at one point, Andrew, do we still have that?
I believe so, I will confirm.
That's right, can you look in that, and, and if not, honestly, uh, like, uh, like...
Just water, cereal, coffee, maybe some...
Yeah, I think, one way or another, we'll get some contributions amongst ourselves, so...
We want Perogi.
Nice.
I have my mother-in-law's...
Wow, tough girl. Wow, tough guy.
My mother, my mother-in-law's lived in my house until forever.
But that's true.
There you go. Now we got Perogi.
Yeah, good say.
Anything to warm it up.
You're only slightly Polish, so don't.
Fifty percent. Okay, we've had this discussion.
I barely. Hundred percent, whatever. All right, so David, that's gonna be on Tuesday, September twenty-first. Again, we're gonna have all the invites go out to all the respective boards and everyone, make sure that everybody's coming. Do we want a formal agenda, or is it gonna be, or are we gonna work through that?
I think agenda would be nice, something, something, maybe not detailed, but something in place.
So let's get some ideas privately without discussing it over to Andrew, and Andrew, I'm gonna leave it up to you and Mary as always.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking maybe even us joining the other boards meeting, you know, just to introduce the idea, something to warm them up a little bit.
About, about, you mean the all boards?
Yeah.
There isn't really a first one. We've had these before. This isn't new. This is just.
So they will know. But maybe they have a new people on the boards.
Can we add, make sure we add master plan to that?
Yeah.
Very cool, yeah.
Well, that would be the goal, right?
It's, I know it's the planning board, but be nice if everybody.
It's a global.
Yeah. Excellent. Basha, thank you for that, and thank, thank the board. All right, next up, under old business, Stafford Street corridor study proposal. Andrew, third second over here.
All right, attach the proposal from Venice Associates. Safety along Stafford, Stafford Street corridor between Route twenty and Set, and Center Depot Road. I'd recommend the board approve the proposal in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, which we look to pull out of the contractual obligations line.
Thanks, Andrew. So for the boards, the catalyst was or is for this is, I think anyone who's lived in town for any amount of time realizes that Stafford Street, Center Depot area, inclusive of the, of the, of the straightaways, basically, that turn them into, you know, you know, speedways, cause a lot of issues. And I received a bunch of phone calls. I went out, took a bunch of pictures. We tried to cut down some shrubs to make it look a little better. It's a constant source of contention on social media, phone calls, et cetera. What I would recommend to the board at least to discuss is that we finally nip this in the bud, that we do a study for relatively short money, again, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, where we actually get real data, real suggestions, both long-term as well as short-term stuff we can potentially fix now to say, how can we make this better? Because the reality is with Route twenty getting developed, with multiple distribution centers, that's gonna turn into a cut through. Anyone who doesn't believe that, it's, it, honestly, it's just going to. Now, do I have the foggiest idea how to fix it? We, I hear tons of suggestions. I mean, some of them sound good, some of them don't. But I think we need someone who really knows what they're talking around, to, to attach you, take a look at this. That being said, I also reached out to State Senator Goby's office to give them a heads up, because depending upon what comes back, it could be a pretty expensive fix. I mean, again, I'm, again, I am making this up. If the traffic study comes back and says, hey, you guys should put a rotary in there. That's not something that we can just, like, write a check. I mean, that's some pretty significant money. But if it's something like, hey, put in a speed bump, put in a, I know, I know everyone talks, you know, on the, like, fullway stop, but again, I've heard in the past that hill, you know, is right now prohibitive. So do we take off the hill? Tons of money. But at least this answers the question of, here's what we need to do to make it safe.
Yep.
So again, it is obviously the board's wishes. I would just like to at least say, I think this is, would finally put this to bed.
I think so. Band-aids for now, and then the long-term and the cost for the long-term.
So you're saying steady for now? So you want the study to be done?
Yes.
On that. How much something like this costs?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
About ten thousand? Yeah, so I mean, now is the time to do that, simply because there's so many new investors coming in. We can use that in the negotiations.
Right.
Some of it. Now, how about that steady price cannot be put in somewhere out there for those investors to pay?
For the study price? I, I, it's something that we can, that we can definitely discuss further with them. I would say, you know, it's probably in our best interest to get the ball rolling and the plan to take it from, you know, our contractual obligation line right now, and then as we're having these discussions, we can maybe look to kind of backfill that later on.
And we don't know, we don't know what their, what the costs are gonna be to actually, so maybe versus pay for the study, maybe, maybe funds be designated to.
The results could be a hundred thousand, a hundred million.
Yeah, we have no, literally no idea. Correct, exactly. Well, I don't think a hundred million, but, but I think.
Oh, you never know. Mr. Chair, I, I will throw my support behind it with the hopes that the response and the results we get are not a mirror image of what we already got back from Mass D O T, who are experts.
That is a danger, but at least this way I can, I think we can finally say, we requisitioned a study. These are professional traffic engineers who have provided these tangible recommendations, both short-term and long-term. There's nothing else we can do at that point, because these are real professionals who actually know, know what they're talking about.
And I think for the public watching, any results that we get back, especially if it's gonna be a huge expense, would have to go to town meeting.
Absolutely.
Of course.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course. But, but Mass D O T, they are experts, but they also prioritize projects. So maybe when we asked them a few years ago, we might not have been, that intersection might not have been on the top of the priority list, but it is in town. So I, I think this is a perfect example of.
The amount of traffic, things are different now.
Well, the data's changed, but we never asked them to prioritize us. We simply asked them to take a look and give us the results of what we can do to fix it. That's not asking to make us a priority, it's just, how do we fix it? To Patsy's point, the data's changed, traffic flow has changed, so hopefully, although we did just recently have them look at it.
Right.
So I'm, I'm hoping we get something different back.
That makes two of us. All right, so select person Singer, I believe, so is that a formal motion? Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any, any further discussion?
None at all.
All right, hearing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Andrew, thank you for researching this. I appreciate it.
Yeah, good job, Andrew.
Again, for those at home, this doesn't happen overnight either, but we're gonna work on it. Next up, town administrator goals. Basically, we need some goals for Andrew.
I have two.
Historically in the past, we've always done Board of Selectment goals. I've been quite honestly critical of that. I think those, those should be separate from town administrator goals, even though in a giant Venn diagram, they often fit together. But I think we need to have something measurable to work through that. Just to kind of kick things off, honestly, my primary goal was, was around infrastructure planning. So, you know, again, we can, we can formalize this at the next meeting, but for the board's purview, what I would recommend is that one of the goals is for Andrew to come up with a list of certain difficult intersections, roads, et cetera, and develop a proposal for both capital funding as well as planning to actually make that work anyway. So mine, the emphasis is going to be around infrastructure. Andrew, we can work through the actual wording, like, with you, either through a workshop or even at the next meeting, but at least for me, that's where I stand. Who wants to go next? Select person Zarowski.
I go with the order of most extreme to less extreme. Thank you for everything you do, Andrew. So the first on my list, and I know this is extreme, and this is a bigger picture, but now we're getting all the investors looking at our town. The town is getting out there, you know, for people to see. The logistics are right, everything aligns in the right way. So I was just, I'm just gonna put it out there. The person, like we talked about, the person that would be literally hired and worked for the town as a solicitor, they will put the businesses that the town wants to solicit, you know, on the map, taking our logistics and our, you know, everything that the town has to offer, and actually go after those specific businesses opposite to us, waiting for the businesses to come. More like a sales-oriented position, but the specific with the goals and the quarters and everything to go to that line.
It's not the E D C, though?
It is.
So just, so just a question, select person Zarowski. So is the, so would Andrew's goal to be develop a proposal for us?
The goal would be to see the pros and cons, you know, with, with actually hiring the person.
Gotcha.
To be, you know, hold accountable with the study position or however you wanna, you know, that's up to you.
So basically, yeah, so, so basically do data analysis with, with, with a formal proposal around pros and cons of like hiring a dedicated person for this.
And, and the responsibilities would be accountability of that position, you know, the goals quarterly, I don't know, yearly. That's the most extreme one.
That would be, you're, you're kind of talking about like the E D C, an E D C director, or that, but the E D C does that without any salary?
But they don't really do it.
Correct. You, you should actually attend it. You should probably attend the E D C meeting.
I talked to Sabrina about it a little bit. So I think you have a different motivation when the accountability is there, you know, for the person that is actually, this is the job.
I would also just caution the board that, again, you know, Basha obviously had, has her view on this, and, you know, to be able to give, give a goal that's something that, we're not saying to actually implement something, but rather to make, to make a proposal, which ultimately is going to be our decision regardless.
Yeah, just, just, just the idea.
Add it to the list, right, add it to the list.
Add it to the list, idea. I have the second one. The e-permitting, the overall website needs to be, you know, looked at. I don't think that should be, especially that the permitting, that's huge for me, but anything else that we missing, maybe, and it should be there, I, I don't, I don't really know. So that would be, that would my second goal. But e-permitting definitely is just trying to make it as accessible to the public as humanly possible.
I think when we talk about town hall hours, which I know we're not necessarily doing tonight.
But they'll go with it, too.
Yes, exactly. I, I one hundred percent agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, and then I have number three, and this is a continuation of Andrew's idea of going and what we just talked about, about going to schools, you know, being more transparent, being more, communicate more, being out there in the community in general. And I know that some town administrators are not really want to be in a, you know, those different places, but, but that would be, that would be ideal for, maybe you can work with Drew, you know, maybe, maybe we can do it every month. Maybe it, it wouldn't be only the, the children. Maybe there would be parents. Maybe there would be a topic of what is going on in a town, two different boards and stuff, you know, just so everybody's informed. And then the roundtable, but we took care of this.
All right, so, so far we have infrastructure. We have a proposal for some type of sales, yeah, economic director, e-permitting, and, and additional community outreach. And again, I, I think depending upon how many we come up with, we may have to whittle it a bit to have something like, let's say, around five to six or seven tall that, that are really actionable for the year, but, yeah, no, I think it's good. Vice Chair Ridlack?
So over the last year, or even we've, I mean, we definitely approved the transparency and like the, the outreach to the public. It's, it's, it's day and night, absolutely, Andrew. So I continue that, because I think that people notice, definitely makes a huge difference. I'm easier, it's, it's just easier to, to get information. My, I think my big hot point issue is I think our website is not user-friendly. I think, I feel like we have like an old platform or something. I know we just invested money to, to change things.
But it's not as worse than it was.
I agree with you.
It's, it's hor-, well, yeah, I don't want to say that, but it's, um.
Website redesign.
It's not friendly.
It's just, it, it's not user-friendly, and when, when you're searching for things, you don't always find what you're looking for. It's simple, it's not a, a simple click. And some of the information doesn't always line, line up. And I, I agree with like the online forums and stuff. Whatever we can do, like, people don't want to physically walk in here, and if they don't, I mean, we love to have everybody, but they don't want to. So whatever we can do to submit, to make things easier, when you can submit your dog license and actually pay, you know, like do, do more of that, but really making it user-friendly. And I don't know what the investment will be, but if you can do a little more research and see, I don't know, but it's, many people go to our website, and I get that, like, you, you have Nike's website.
Maybe something that has an app, something like that.
So I'm hearing continued outreach, and most importantly, information sharing proactively, but also a proposal or some type of thing around a website redesign. Once again, to your point, we just did it, but I, I echo Selectman Singer's thing. I think it's actually not as good as the old one. So that's something that we can at least look at. Again, it'll be up to us to decide to fund it along with town meeting, but to, but to have a proposal to, to make recommendations. Where for you, Vice Chair? Selectman Singer?
Thank you, sir. I have two, really one point five. I, I, 'cause I say point five because the other one is, is going to involve Andrew and require his assistance, but also the board. I think they're also both extremely achievable. The first, which Andrew's already begun pulling data together for, are fees that are under the board's, this board's control. I have long been a believer in just because other towns do, doesn't mean we should, especially since most of the towns are poorly run anyway. I would like us to look at lowering the fees that this board has oversight for. I, I know there are things we can do, especially going through what we've gone through. It would, I think, help a lot of the residents with reduced or eliminated income streams, to make it a little easier financially to do business with the town, even if temporary. But I would like to look at it and, and see if Andrew can find a way for us to make it more affordable to do business with the town, at least where the Board of Selectment is concerned. I think that some of our fees do not need to be where they are.
Can you example one? I mean, give me an example.
Building fees.
Okay.
For, if you want to build a deck, for example, I, I think the fee is exorbitant. You know, I just think there are a lot of fees we can look at that we can lower and make the life of our residents a little easier. That said, my second goal is also designed to make the residents' lives easier. And that would be to challenge Andrew to work with the department heads to streamline the process when someone comes to this town hall, because they need to, for example, build a pool. You have to go to multiple departments, and the way it is right now, we make the resident do the running. We're making them do the work that our town employees are paid to do. You run to this office, you run to this office. It shouldn't be that way. A resident should be able to come in and say, this is what I want to do, fill out the paperwork, and drop it off. There's no reason we can't have a department then do what they have to do, send that paperwork to the next office to have it processed, to the next office to have it processed, and to notify the resident when the paperwork is done, come back and pick it up. I think it's a small thing, but easily achievable, that would make our lot, our residents' lives so much easier and make their business with town hall much more pleasant.
So Selectman Singer, is it fair to say, and again, I'm, I'm paraphrasing just to make sure that, the first would be for Andrew to present an analysis and recommendations for lowering B O S-controlled fees.
Yes.
And the second is to Andrew work with the department heads to streamline the process, to have like a single point of contact, really to make it easier so that that resident comes in and says, here's my application for X, Y, or Z, and then they're done unless the department head has questions about it.
Correct. They should be able to drop it off, and when one department's done, send it to the next, instead of making them come back, get it, come back, and get it, come back and get it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
Andrew, you have questions on that?
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, you have a project, and you actually have to go to planning, zoning, and building. You're, you want to make that one process?
It's not one process, but for example, if you want to put a pool in, you're gonna have to go to building. You may have to go to Board of Health, you may have to go to ConCon, whoever you have to go to. I go and pick up, drop off the paperwork, but then I pick it up, and then I have to run it down to that office. And then I have to pick it up, and I have to run it to another office. I'm not asking one board to do another board's job. I'm asking one board to simply, when they finish their part of it, to send the paperwork to the next board, so they can do their part of it. And then the resident just comes back when it's all done, and they pick up their paperwork. Instead of making them go to two offices, three offices, and multiple trips to this building, they should be able to come in and just say, notify me when it's done, and one office does what they have to do. That's it.
Unless there's hearings and stuff.
That's where I think we probably have to figure out the details, and that's where I probably defer to Andrew to say. Right, if you have to attend a hearing, that's a different animal entirely. But for a lot of permitting processes, you don't have to.
Like with a pool, you don't have to go to a hearing, but you get sent to all these different offices. Same with a deck. Do you really need to go to, no, you don't have to go to a hearing, but they make you do all the running. Let them come in and just say, here's my project and my applications, run it through the various offices, notify when it's done, and I can just come back.
So you maybe get one packet or something, and you, this is everything you need to fill out, and it'll travel around all.
We take care of moving it from office to office. You just have to come back when it's ready.
I like that.
Thank you, Selectman Singer. Selectman Cruz?
Yep. Well, I, I'm, funny, the best part about going last is all the good ideas were already taken.
Even better.
But I'll take credit for three of them anyway, but, but.
Well done.
But I, but Andrew, Andrew's done a real, I'm just gonna commend him, actually. He's done a really good job keeping us up to speed on all the things that are going on.
Obviously he has a big ask. Obviously you have a big ask.
Ask? No, no, I don't. No, I don't. No, there's no, no, I thought you said ask.
No, we talked about that earlier. Yeah, go first.
No, it's, the, the, everything I've learned about Andrew, he listens. So we've, we've, I've sat through, the pledge was sitting through a few of these negotiations with some of these new developers coming in, and he's listening. The things that he's asking, the things that we talk about, it's, it's things that we've already, I've heard going around his table just now. Just keep that up. Keep us informed, keep us in the loop. You're doing a great job at that. It's gonna be a busy year. You're gonna have a busy year. There's no question about it. I don't want to overburden you with too many directions, but it's gonna be, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe. There were three big projects, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Cruz, thank you for that. So Andrew, what I'd recommend is, you know, try to type something up with what, with what you understood us to say. We can formalize it next meeting, and actually, let's also formalize when we're actually gonna do Andrew's review next year. So to really draw the line in the sand to say, between September and X, we expect progress on these things, and that's how we'll judge you accordingly. So let, but let's actually get that in the sand. But, but again, if, we can negotiate it if there's any issues at the next meeting, and we'll figure it out. Any other concerns from the board on T A goals? Cool. If, if we do want to discuss B O S goals, I'm happy to have that conversation, just not today. Let's talk the N E C Development Agreement.
That'll be pending.
Okay, sorry. So we're, we may or may not come out of exact on that one. B O S committee reports, I didn't hear of anything. Policy review, I didn't hear of anything. Goals and objectives.
Mr. Chair.
David?
The only, we didn't talk about sex offender committee yet, did we?
No, I didn't know if you wanted to bring that on.
Just a quick note to the public, we, we will not be putting that on the warrant. We have found out that, I believe it was due to legal changes, we are no longer legally allowed to have such a bylaw. So apparently, the state of Massachusetts is again going to prioritize those who prey on victims instead of the victims. So, call it like I see it. So we are no longer legally able to have a sex offender bylaw of any sort.
Actually, Selectman Singer, thank you for that. And we actually did talk to legal counsel around that, and it's one of those, it's basically a no-go. The state has ruled, and barring any significant changes, it's just not possible. So Selectman Singer, what I may recommend, and obviously it's under your purview as, as the leader of this, we could disband the by, I'm sorry. Yeah, we could disband the bylaw committee, but again, that's completely up to you.
Yep, I would make that motion.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anything else to discussion? I just want to thank Selectman Singer once again for his leadership on this over the years, obviously trying to protect those that need our protection. And again, I, I echo what he said, it's unfortunate when the state is prioritizing others.
But when, when did the state change the law?
Few years ago.
Yeah, 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 it was like, it was like three, four years ago roughly. So it's.
Also a big.
But there were still, there were still guidelines.
No, you can't have one at all.
No, we don't, we don't, but the state has guidelines.
Not really.
Yeah, you can't have one at all.
Living within a school or.
Nope.
No.
Gone.
Correct. Yeah, those were all challenged and thrown out.
And I think we owe a, a thanks as well to Mary.
As always.
At our office. Her research going back and helping us find the previous versions of the bylaw, it was invaluable.
I think that I'm gonna skip all those flashing signs that say, thank you, Mary, that just. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. No other discussion unless, all right, hearing none. All those in favor of disbanding?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's, that's unanimous. Again, Selectman Singer, thank you, and Andrew, you as well. All right, no policies, goals and objectives. Again, we can talk about it on a different day. T A report?
So as you know, the Brookfield Road Bridge has been closed since about beginning of July. Just wanted to keep the board updated that. Right now, we currently are on track to have the, the meeting, or it's to have the bridge reopened beginning of September. Should be like one of the first two weeks, so seem to be right on track with that, right with the school reopening. American Recovery Act funds, so, you know, biggest news in the, yeah, biggest headline news has been the amount of money that's been coming down from the federal government right now under the American Recovery Act, where we're basically earmarked for, right, just about over four million dollars to come to the town over the next two years with, you know, certain stipulations as to what those funds can and cannot be used for. So we're kind of putting the feelers out right now internally to try to get as many ideas as to kind of put together, almost like more ideas than we have money for, so that we can kind of go back through and go, you know, this doesn't work, this, and then try to work that through FinCom. So really, if this board has any ideas, you know, large projects that may be able to fit, you know, let me know, you know, discuss it as a board, push that down, but I'm hoping that at some point, we kind of work more with FinCom, get that before the board, and then maybe around the same time as we're bringing for the final capital plan, that we also have a, you know, a general, you know, at least maybe first-year budget and general outline of, of expenditures for, for this money, so.
I, I saw that, I saw that email. Was there a, is there a deadline that we have to meet for that?
So it just is that all funding has to be obligated by. So it just is that all funding has to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and that you have to, has to be expended before December 31st, 2026.
So we have some time, and again, I think that's one of those, to your point, if we have specific recommendations.
Sidewalks.
Give them to Andrew to talk to FinCom about. Obviously, these are probably just one-time expenditures, so anything operating might be dangerous, but again, I defer to the board. So get those ideas privately to Andrew, and we can discuss those in the upcoming months. Do you want to?
Oh, and then just the return of Senate district hours. So Ann, Ann Goby's aide, Lucas McDermott, will be holding senior, his, the office hours at the senior center again Tuesday, August 17th, 12 to 1:00.
Thank you, TA goals, as always.
Mr. Chair, as everyone's aware, Mr. Goal is just sadly confirmed for me, we unfortunately cannot use that money to put in stabilization.
Nice try. But nice try, because it would have been a nice use of it.
I, I just, anyway, I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to say what I want to say. It's, it's, it's Recovery Act money, but it can't be spent until 2024 and 2026. What if we recovered before that?
No, it has to be spent by.
It has to be spent by.
By.
By?
Yeah, it has to be completely, otherwise, they take the money back and say, thank you very much.
Yeah, standard grant stuff.
Exactly.
Yep.
All right, other business, unknown time of posting. I know there's some folks who are interested in town hall office hours. I think we were still accumulating some data, so we pushed that off until the next meeting. So that'll be coming up again. If you haven't taken that survey, go ahead. Or if you have feedback, get it to the board of selectmen, please. Any other asks from the board, or any other, for our next agenda, and/or the business that we need to talk around tonight, outside of exec session?
Sure.
Cool. Actually, Drew?
Let me just, so just, just, Basha and I are really working on our float for the parade, so be nice if we all showed up.
I look forward to walking behind it.
I will absolutely, I will absolutely get all home day, but I am definitely a walker.
You're walking?
Would you like to interact with everyone that's along the streets?
Yeah, that's fine. It'll be, it'll be a real, really nice float.
You know, I, you know, I'll give you some time on it.
If, can you send us a picture before we decide whether or not we want to walk behind it?
No.
It's all about political compromise. Spend some time on it.
That's something.
So Will will ride us from Masonic Home.
In a costume?
To this corner.
No, just joking.
I might wear that apron from, from my appreciation.
They've got another better idea.
And we're, we will have a, a town table, like a, you know, like a town booth. And if everybody has a little bit of time, it's really, my main focus is kind of like the recruitment side, to use our charming personalities to sell how.
You don't want me there.
Yeah, all right. So David's not invited.
No.
Um, there's, I mean, there's, there's always distress and everything else that comes along, but there's a lot of good points, a lot of positive things about being part of our town, knowing everybody's businesses. And so if, if we or any other of the officials or employees want to come and, and do.
I'll be wandering back and forth.
That would be.
I'll be running around, yeah.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We appreciate that. Before we go, just a couple more things. Drew, can you do me a huge favor? Can you get a close-up of that picture behind Selectman Singer and/or TA goals?
No.
Or as David holds it.
There you go.
You got it? Thank you. Again, for those who don't know, this is a famous painting by Norman, oh, hold on.
Hold it, Norman.
Thanks, Drew. Thanks, David. So those who don't know, this is actually a very famous painting by Norman Rockwell. It's actually around people speaking at town meetings on things, believe it or not. And I, this was donated generously by former chairperson Spiewack and FinCon member Joe Spiewack. So I just want to say thank you to them. It's going to find a good home here at town hall. So again, it also ties back into our dissent is good for government and to, and to stand up either at town meeting or in elections, and actually voice your opinion, popular or not, is healthy. So we look forward to that. Our next meeting is September 14th, 2021, 6:30. We're going to be back here again, so exciting to be back. And we are going into executive session. We could potentially be coming out to vote, Andrew?
Yeah.
So we may or may not, so we may come out and take a vote, we don't know. I would entertain a motion to go into exec.
I make a motion to go in executive session, motion under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. NEC in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on, on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair, and if the chair so declares.
The chair does declare. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got David first. No, I'm going to give it to Steve. Roll call vote, starting with Steve.
Aye.
David? Basha?
Aye.
Patzy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in executive session. We may come out and take a vote. I don't know if we're going to or not, to be honest with you, but after that, we're only going to adjourn, so that's, that's worst case. We're going to take a five-minute recess to get the lawyer on, and then everyone can do what they want in five minutes while I eat a piece of cake. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Drew, you're awesome.
Recording stopped.